Questions I'd like to talk about, I would prefer to have time beyond just one week, but since that's what my colleagues indicated a preference for on Tuesday, I think we, I think there are, I could certainly go and have my questions answered individually, and I have received some information from staff. But this is really a conversation for our diets, since it's a pretty big public asset, and I'd like to have that conversation with you, my colleagues, because I want to brainstorm about what some of our options are from here. And I would just say, I remember a very similar circumstance, probably three or four meetings ago, where Councilmember Harper-Madison and Councilmember Flanagan wanted a postponement on the Parkland dedication in District Nine, and on that day, we also had an executive session. So, you know, it's not, it's, I'm sure we've done it in other circumstances too, but when we have those issues that require a fair amount of conversation, it seems useful to have that conversation in advance, even if we are postponing it. I think it helps us be, I think we have, we have a fair amount of ground to cover, and so doing some of that today is, helps us be really, will help me get some, get further along the way for next week.
Staff, is there any problem with postponing item number forty, from a timing standpoint, till next week, when item number nine is considered?
Mayor, council members, there is some feedback from staff on this, and so I just want to allow that time for them to be able to provide that, so council has the implications of what postponing item forty would do. So maybe if we can just hold on the actual action, so maybe after we hear from the public, we can give you that feedback from staff.
At this point, let's pull items number nine and pull item number forty for consideration later. So nine, forty, and forty-four are pulled. Councilmember Kitchen, you have forty-six. Do you want to make that amendment, see if people will take that on? It's thirty-one, forty-six pulled.
No, I don't want it pulled. I sent it out yesterday, so.
Objection to the amendment that Councilmember Kitchen circulates on item number forty-six. That's our Flanagan.
I need more time to think about forty-six. Can we just pull it?
Yep, forty-six is pulled. Okay, currently showing being pulled at this point, item number nine, forty, forty-four, and forty-six. Councilmember Kassar?
Mayor, I've, I'd like to leave these on consent if possible, but happy to pull them off if folks need discussion, but I've, sorry, came a little late, but circulated, and everybody should have an amendment to forty-eight that I hope is friendly, and I can explain it maybe after speakers, or if useful, but I have no need to pull it, but I just wanted to flag that for folks' attention, to potentially leave on consent, and then I just make a comment about why I think it is important, but hopefully friendly. I've also circulated an amendment on eleven, that I laid out during work session. We've gotten a letter from Good Work Austin and Workers' Defense talking about it, so happy to, I'll try and reply again, I think you need to mute. Sorry about that. Not trying to call you out, it was just.
That's okay, we so seldom catch, Councilmember Flanagan.
It wasn't for that reason, I promise. So, so that was about item forty-eight, so you all should have it. Item eleven is the Chapter Three Eighty. I had indicated this amendment during work session. We've got a letter from Workers' Defense and Good Work Austin agreeing to that set of rules, considering that Three Eightys is usually about big corporate headquarters, now that we're using it as a economic disaster tool. This is, these were the rules that they came together, small businesses and workers' rights advocates to agree to, so hopefully that can just be incorporated, but let me know if you have questions. And then, because during the Chapter Three Eighty discussion, we had some question about what, if anything, council would have to say to consider the question of pre-funding some of that program, we, manager, we may have to pull it if you want that discussion or direction, or if the manager, maybe after testimony, lets us know that he can just have us consider that next week or something. I have no baseline, I have no need to pull it, but I did raise those two, those two issues.
You circulated amendments on which numbers?
I circulated amendments on Councilmember Tobo's item number forty-eight, as well as staff item eleven on Chapter Three Eighty.
Okay.
And I think those likely are without objection, but happy to hear if there are questions, and that's which we have.
So let's, people who haven't had a chance to look at them yet, for sure, let's make the decision on that after speakers, and we'll note that. Councilmember Kitchen?
I think that staff had some comments they wanted to make on fifty-one and fifty-two, which is related to the street impact, that related to perhaps going on second reading today only, so I don't know if we can just take their comments, or if that needs to be pulled.
It's not on consent. Consent is items one through forty-nine.
Okay.
We'll be able to pick that up when we're done with consent.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. All right, Councilmember Tobo?
Mayor, thank you. I'd like, I'd like item thirty-three to remain on consent, but my staff has had conversation with our purchasing department in light of our, the work that our council has done on in-sourcing contracts. This is a new contract for particular cleaning protocol that respond to COVID-19, but I would like to, I would like it to remain on consent, but be limited to the initial term only, and then come back to council for those extensions if needed.
Okay. Is staff okay with that limitation? Just to the initial term, having to come back to council for extensions?
I believe so, but let me confirm.
And I'm trying to confirm, Mayor, what that initial term is. Believe it may just be a year.
Okay, so I'm going to put a star next to thirty-three, the same way I put it next to eleven and forty-eight, and we'll make sure we come back to those after speakers. Councilmember Kitchen?
Councilmember Flanagan mentioned that he had some questions on forty-six. If possible, perhaps he could get those answered, and we could leave it on consent. So I just ask him to think about that while we are doing our speakers.
Okay. Let's council member pull.
I just wanted to note that I got here a little bit late, but I did get here.
It's good to see you on the day.
Thanks, good to see everybody.
All right, just before we do speakers, again, eight and twenty-three have been withdrawn, forty-four added, Councilmember Alter, forty-four was pulled, but we have late backup in items seven, eight, ten, twelve, thirteen, sixteen, twenty-three, forty-one, forty-two, forty-six, forty-seven, fifty-one, fifty-two, sixty-eight, seventy-two. And hopefully I'll remember to say it later, but when we get to the Austin Housing Finance Corporation, it's also late backup on item number two. Councilmember Flanagan?
Thank you, Councilmember Kitchen, for the suggestion. That was my intention, so we'll, we'll be bringing the details, make sure that we're all up to speed. To that same end, on forty-four, I, my staff and I posted a very simple additional whereas, that's the only change I'm suggesting, it's on the message board, but we did post it just late this morning, so I think that might also be able to stay on consent, if I would just kind of put some eyeballs to it, should be pretty simple.
Okay. Then I'll put a star next to forty-four, to see if we can take the amendment, everybody should find that, take a look at that too, I think I was sent out by the clerk. We ready to go to speakers? All right, at this point, the consent agenda is items one through forty-nine. We are pulling nine, forty, and forty-six, potentially eleven, thirty-three, forty-four, and forty-eight, but we'll see if those are things we can just keep on consent, we'll discuss that after speakers.
Mayor, Councilmember Flanagan just mentioned that he might be able to keep forty-six on consent, so he just put a star next to that one, too.
Got it, thank you. All right, councilor pull.
Thanks, and with regard to the amendment that Councilmember Flanagan is offering up, I, I see that as friendly, and I'm happy to add it in, and we can keep that item forty-four on consent.
Okay, sounds good, we're going to give everybody a chance to take a look at that, but thank you for learning us that it's okay with you. All right, we're going to then do morning speakers. We have twenty-six speakers, because of twenty-six, we're going to go three minutes each. Who's with us today from the clerk's office?
It's Myrna Mayer, good morning. The first speaker is Pat Bigtah.
Good morning, councilmembers, Pat Bigtah here, Executive Director of Austin, Texas Musician, and I'm with you once again today to urge quick action on delivering SAVES funding to venues. First of all, I really, truly want to thank you guys for hearing our community. You guys have worked hard to allocate five million dollars in funding to aid Austin's music venues, and as you know, our stakeholder partners have been very plugged in to the process with you, as staff works to create program guidelines. But the point that we're frustrated about, and I think you guys all understand this, is that no clear timeline on delivery has been offered. In your work session on October fifteenth, councilmembers stated the funds should be delivered within thirty to forty-five days, and of course, we've gone well past that deadline now, leaving thousands of your musician and venue worker constituents wondering why cities such as Nashville, Oklahoma City, and Houston have been able to deliver funds to venues within just weeks of program announcement. So we're all left wondering here, and as you heard at the Come and Take It rally just a couple of weeks ago, what's the holdup? The only answer that we've been able to come up with is that the technical requirement portion of the program is an unnecessary barrier right now to getting immediate aid out the door, as real estate lawyers and consultants are hired. And listen, I get that the renegotiation of leases is an important component of ensuring the future of our venues, and all those technical, technical requirements are great, but, you know, for now, why don't we at least get some of that money out the door before Christmas, so venues like Parker Jazz Club, who are in immediate danger of closing, have a little hope, so that venues like the Elephant Room, who should be celebrating their thirtieth anniversary in January, have a chance to keep the lights on? You know, we keep getting the same question over and over again, you know, us, our partners with the Music Venue Alliance in Red River Cultural District, and they keep asking us, how many venues are in danger of closing within the next month? And the answer is very simple from the data we have, all of them. Okay, the council has worked so hard this year to deliver aid all across our community, and we commend you for that. We want to recognize the fact that you guys have, you know, worked so hard on the Music Disaster Relief Fund, on the Creative Worker Grant, and we are humbled that you guys have taken the time, you know, to prioritize our music community, but in the spirit of giving, let's get that aid out to our music venues before Christmas, so that we may all have a bright future in the new year. Have a safe and happy holiday, everyone, thank you.
And thank you. You know, at the session that we had on Tuesday, staff indicated that they were going to get that emergency allocation out right away, they hoped to have that out by the end of the month, and I certainly hope that staff is able to try and make that, to try and make that goal. Next speaker.
Cara Castile?
Hi, my name is Cara Castile, and I am speaking to you on behalf of the Amplified Sound Coalition and the newly-founded Texas Music Workforce Coalition. From the moment South By was canceled, industry leaders started voicing their concerns about survivability, the impact and future of live music in Austin. You know, the simple question is, have you been listening to us? Did you listen to us then? Why has there still not been any meaningful thing done to support the live music venues and industry that created this town? You know, you've offered very little support, and even the grants that have been offered seem to have been reviewed by folks that really don't have a true understanding of the business. As far as events go, you know, you have the power to work with promoters to, to help stage safe events, but instead, you know, you've chosen to keep everything switched off, and, you know, that's left folks without jobs and careers. We are an industry driven, driven and hardworking people made up of tens of thousands of your constituents. You know, we're not going to just stand by. We've had nonprofits that have been created in the wake of this ineptitude. The moment we had to start doing your work, your jobs, was the moment that, you know, our local government failed us. It's been nine months, you know, where is the money for this venue? Where is the money to support this industry that created this town? We're just simply asking for you to please, you know, do your job. Thank you, thank you for your time.
Hannah Senko?
I just want to say to the last speaker, thanks for coming and participating in that today's meeting, we're approving guidelines for the distribution of the SAVES money for venues and for music, and as I said, excited with the prospect that some of the emergency funds could get out possibly by the, by the end of the month, and I'm excited that the program that we're doing, unlike just a regular grant program that you've seen in some of the other cities, that this investment, which is pretty significant amount, will get out quickly, but it'll get out in a way that provides for real sustainability and like. But we understand the need, and understand that this is an industry that is among the first to be hit so, so very hard.
Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Hannah Senko, and I am a sexual assault survivor whose case was closed via exceptional clearance by APD. When I started out on this journey, I wanted to believe that if you and the public only knew and understood the problem at hand, then change could occur, and that change would occur. I wanted to believe that if you knew that sexual assault cases were being, weren't being investigated, that rape kits were sitting on shelves untouched, that cases were erroneously being closed to pad APD's numbers, and that a survivor essentially didn't have a chance at prosecution, let alone justice, that you too would be propelled to move into action just the same. Now, two years later, and after standing in front of you, providing public testimony not once, but twice, after presenting to our Public Safety Commission, after speaking on podcasts, writing articles, agreeing to media interviews, trying to line up less public meetings with your offices at no avail, and now serving as a lead plaintiff on one of the two class-action lawsuits against our city and county, little to no movement has been made. During this time, it is estimated that another two-hundred, twenty thousand individuals have fallen victim to sexual assault right here in our community, and I am deputened to report that I have had to change my mindset. We are no longer here because the problem isn't understood, we are here because the appropriate actions have not been taken. I hate that we have to keep coming back, stand up in front of you and share our stories. I hate that we are now having these discussions through the lenses of multiple lawsuits. But know that we are here because over the years, APD has refused to step up, solve the problem, and simply say yes, we want to do better, help us do better. We continue to hear them defend their position and take actions that deny that a problem ever did exist, or even still exists today, and now we are left with no other option than to go more and more public, grow our army of advocates, and make our cries for help even louder. I know that I don't have to look far to find the survivors amongst all of you, I know that every time one of us stands up here and fights for change, that several new survivors come forward and find their courage to do so also. It is now important for the public to understand that the city is fighting against their own female residents, playing legal games, and avoiding to address the real problem at hand, while survivors are left waiting in the wind, and continue to be denied access to the safety, the protection, and justice in holding their rights accountable. Us survivors and advocates have done our part, now we are expecting you to do yours. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Sean Dickerson, I'm on Board of Directors with Red River Cultural District, I'm production manager at Swan Dives at Seventeen Red River. I'd like to thank all of y'all for listening to us, again today, and again, all the hard work you've been doing, and of course, all, all the people calling in on behalf of the music community to, to speak today as well. Just want to, again, you've spoken that you're moving, trying to get these funds released to help additionally fund, to save our venues, and yeah, just these items eleven through thirteen here, again, I'd like to throw another hat in just to push how much we really need this money, you know, we're all scared, we're all looking at, you know, we're all just pulling by, just trying to, trying to make it happen here, and, you know, we appreciate your thoughts on this, and we really, really could use this money as soon as possible. Again, for the city we all love, and music brought a lot of us here, so thank you for looking at this, thank you for your urgency, and, and thank you for your time, it means a lot to a lot of people to keep these music venues open in this town, and it means a lot to not only us workers for our employment, but everyone who is missing live music and missing what the heart and soul of Austin is for a lot of people right now. Thank you so much for your time, happy holidays to you all.
Ryan Garrett?
Good morning, Mayor Adler and councilmembers, my name is Ryan Garrett, and I am the General Manager of Stubbs Barbecue, an operating partner of the Green Jay, both of which reside in the Red River Cultural District. I am here today to support the passage of items eleven, twelve, and thirteen. You will hear frequently today the hard truth, that more music venues are critically close to permanent closure. The passage of these three resolutions will greatly assist us in our pursuit of small business survival, but at the core of these resolutions lie a significant community investment in people. These are resolutions dedicated towards job preservation for the thousands of hospitality and music industry professionals that reside in Austin. The passage of these resolutions keeps a roof over their head and food on their table. They need jobs to come back to, and the music venues need to be there for them, as they have been for us for so many years. We are out of time, and the accelerated extension of the benefits these resolutions provide is of paramount importance for Austin to maintain its global identity as an epicenter for art, culture, and live music. Please pass items eleven, twelve, and thirteen, and please enact the distribution of these benefits immediately. I thank you for your time and your service.
Monica Guzman?
Yes, good morning, I'm Monica Guzman, Policy Director for GAVA, Go Austin, Vamos Austin, speaking on items eleven, forty-three, and forty-four. Item eleven, thank you for your support of our children, our families, and the Austin economy through your support of childcare centers. Item forty-four, we urge you to approve the resolution in support of Texas State Representative Gina Hinojosa, House Bill eighty-four, repealing the prohibition of inclusionary zoning. Item forty-three, while the need for an offense and penalty for any person, any entity intentionally ignoring orders, meant to protect us all from COVID-19 is understandable, we are concerned about the potential for disproportionate impact. The communities of color in Austin's Eastern Crescent and other parts of Austin were already struggling, the disproportionate impact on these communities was further exacerbated by COVID-19, especially those who cannot shelter in place. Many in the city still do not know about, or do not understand, the importance of the safety protocols. We urge you to include a COVID-19 safety protocol education, instead of only fines for the disproportionately impacted who are not aware, are not understanding. Thank you.
Scott Turner?
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council, I'm Scott Turner, I'm a member of the Evolve Austin Coalition, and I'd like to talk about the street impact fees. We are concerned about the impact that the new street impact fees will have on housing affordability, on top of the existing fees on new housing, as those most impacted by the new fees will be renters and suburban homeowners, who are the majority of Austinites. We urge you to consider street impact fees in the context of broader outcomes for housing affordability, equity, and transit. Because we're in a housing affordability crisis, please consider a lower base fee. As we all know, it's easy for city fees to go up, but they never seem to go down. Please use the three-year review period in the ordinance to make sure we are achieving equitable outcomes citywide, and we are glad to see transit-supported policies included in the ordinance, but would like to see further direction for simplicity and predictability in the notoriously complex criteria manual used to implement them. So as we take up discussion today, please consider this an opportunity to make a city process simpler and more predictable, while aligning it with the city's policy goals for a compact and connected city in our Imagine Austin Comprehensive Plan. Because we will never achieve these goals, or Vision Zero, if street impact fees simply fund more roads for more cars. Thank you very much for your consideration.
Hello, good morning, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm calling with regards to items eleven through thirteen, and to echo the words that Pat shared and others, and I'm excited to hear that the, that these funds are going to be distributed hopefully by the end of this month, thank you very much for that, and thank you for all of your work on this issue. And I'd also like to, to share my support for item forty-six. So there's not much I can say that you haven't already heard, but the issue is so important that it bears repeating again and again, until you act on your promises. It's been nine weeks since the SAVES resolution is passed, and none of those funds have been distributed. I understand that this is a complicated process, and I really appreciate the care and consideration that needs to go into the distribution of these funds, but these are not normal circumstances, and your community, your constituents, need you to act with much more urgency to connect our ailing creative sector with these desperately needed funds. We're in crisis, you're painfully aware of this fact, I'm sure. I'm a full-time professional performing musician, and I've been out of work for almost ten months now. Some of my colleagues have begun performing again in public, but most of us are also in this situation, just trying to make ends meet while desperately hoping there's an industry to come back to when it's truly safe to do so. I fear that if you don't distribute at least some of these funds as soon as possible, this industry will crumble, and with it, will lose the heart and soul of Austin. So to that end, I'd also like to express my support for item forty-six. This idea provides a much more long-term, sustainable option for you to ensure the survivability of our community and your brand. We need more creative solutions like this one to keep this industry thriving through changing times. But please keep in mind that while this unique and vibrant artistic nature of this town can become your brand, it's our livelihood, we're depending on you to help us keep it alive, but please don't drag your feet on this any longer, we need you to do much more than inch We need you to do much more than inch forward with a few formalities each meeting, but please consider escalating this process in order for it to be truly effective. Please also remember that at the October 15th council meeting, I brought a community petition which garnered 252 signatures in just a few days in support of the Visitor Center Fund, which is on this week's agenda in item 46. If you act to support this community and show us that you mean what you say, we'll continue to support you in the next election cycle. So thank you so much for all of your work on these issues, and have a wonderful, wonderful holiday. Thank you.
Thank you. I've just been suggested that I make sure folks know that what the staff's trying to get at is the emergency funding, which I think is about $20,000 per venue that is eligible as part of the process, then to get the full package out as soon thereafter as possible as people go through the process. But we understand the urgency and the need, and we're hoping to do in this program something that's really unique in the country. But thank you. Next speaker.
Sonia Javett.
Howdy, howdy, Mayor Adler, Austin City Council members, and friends. My name is Sonia Javett. I'm a singer-songwriter, musician, music producer, guitar teacher, and the secretary of the Austin, Texas Musicians Board of Directors. I'm here to speak on item 11, 13. Music is a key element to every occasion that happens in Austin, Texas, and around the world. As a music artist, one of the goals is to get the opportunity to perform in a major music venue, like Kenny Dorm's Backyard, Victory Grill, The Whippin', The Elephant Room, Anderson Mill Pub, and the slew of open mics. Live music artists need venues to harness our skills, preferably a venue that demonstrates diversity and equity. The city, the state, and this country need music to help it heal and grow and move forward as a community. Austin, Texas can't be the live music capital of the world if it doesn't have live music venues. Save this diverse community, save the music venues, save our venues. Thank you for your time.
Rebecca Reynolds.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This is Rebecca Reynolds with the Music Venue Alliance, and I am calling in support of items 11 through 13. We're hopeful that today is the day desperately needed disaster funding will become available for Austin's live music venues. I do want to thank you and EDD staff for all of your work on getting us to this point. In recent weeks, I have heard very encouraging feedback from our members and some community partners on conversations had with council members Tovo and Kitchen and Mayor Adler. Venue owners, venue staff, and musicians are grateful for your leadership. What Austin's music community needs from you today is communication of a clear timeline of when the funds will be dispersed. Specifically, will funds be released by the end of this calendar year, or is it simply the application process that will begin before the end of the year? The information is critical because while the emergency $20,000 is essential, what venue owners need is some news of what to expect that they can take back to their landlord. I would ask that the moratorium on venue evictions be extended until round two of SAVES funding has been dispersed. We have many iconic venues relying on that moratorium right now. We also have 18 music venues that have been operating for at least 20 years. Continental Club, Hole in the Wall, Fax and Pub, Elephant Room, and Flamingo Cantina, just to name a few. Can these legacy businesses expect to be served on the same timeline as those applying through the venue fund, or will the timelines be different? We would also ask that council and staff take to heart Mayor Adler's assertion during Tuesday's work session that scoring and performance metrics in a pandemic disaster relief program should simply be survival. Jobs, workers' and musicians' mental health, our culture and identity, and the resiliency of Austin's economy, economic recovery are resting on the success of these programs. Thank you again for your stewardship and careful consideration.
Council members, good morning, and thank you for your time today. This is Cody Cowan, Executive Director of the Red River Cultural District, speaking today in favor of items 11, 12, and 13. We're very thankful for the support delivered by council and staff for our city's music economy and music workers through the pandemic. By many standards, the city of Austin's delivery of disaster relief for the music sector has been excellent and has also been unsurpassed by any other city in this country. That being observed, I wanted to convey a firm reminder about time. The year is drawing to a close. Music venues still do not have access to the SAVES funding approved by council over 60 days ago. And a reminder that these funds are simply a bridge to the anticipated federal stimulus package. Awarding these funds this month will make an excellent Christmas present for the venues, as well as for their dedicated staff and performing musicians, most of whom have gone up to 10 months without engaging in that deeply rewarding work that is not only their passion and their income, but also their purpose and their craft. Today, you can give that gift of hope to our city's working-class creatives, that all is not lost, that a better tomorrow may yet come. Please approve measures to release this money quickly today. Thank you to the mayor, city council, Veronica Sonovia, and the whole EDD team for this work for the community, but also for your ongoing acknowledgement of the deep public and economic benefit that our music sector provides to Austin. Working together, we will emerge from these hard times through grit, determination, fearless leadership, and through our strength as a community. Peace be upon you all.
Paul Robbins.
Council, today you will be setting a public hearing on expanding the Customer Assistance Program for water utility discounts to low-income customers in master meter departments. I believe this is item 49. This will allow a discount per customer of about $200 a year. I generally support this recommendation. However, I have to point out that the increase in taxes you just implemented for rail is the largest regressive tax increase in Austin's history. It may partially or totally cancel any utility discount benefits that you are giving here. You are giving with one hand and taking away with the other. It seems that every council meeting, there's a discussion of equity. Where is the equity here? How Prop A taxes fall on the poor does not seem to be something that was planned for, and this example of giving with one hand and taking away with the other is caustic. I'm going to say this for the first time, though I hope to repeat it at future meetings. I believe that there should be a blanket exemption from Prop A tax, from the Prop A tax, on the first $200,000 of a residential unit's property tax. Since most apartment units are worth less than single-family homes, this exemption will benefit these rental units the most, and since the majority of apartment dwellers make less income than homeowners, it will be more equitable. The city's publicly required notice of tax increase, of the tax increase for Prop A estimated that the cost for the, it estimated the cost for the average residential homestead. It did not estimate the rent increase for an apartment, and as you know, there are more households in Austin that rent than own. Thanks for your attention.
Good morning, Mayor Adler and Council. My name is Austin Bailey, and I'm a talent buyer from Mohawk located in the Red River Cultural District. I'm speaking today in support of Agenda Items 11, 12, and 13. Our independently-owned and operated live music venues are the bedrock of cultural tourism and a key economic force in our city, employing tens of thousands of Austinites and generating millions of dollars in tax revenue annually. Our locally-owned small businesses are the first to close and will be the last to reopen. We have zero revenue, but obligations such as rent, mortgage, utilities, loans, taxes, and insurance continue to accrue. The ability to open at partial capacity is not economically feasible. The aforementioned overhead costs are not on a sliding scale matching the reduced capacities we will likely face when we are permitted to host live events once again. These are fixed costs. Due to the national routing of most tours, our industry will not recover until the entire country is open at 100% capacity, which by most industry estimates will be well into Q4 of 2021. Until we can do so, we have no opportunities to reemploy the sound engineers, lighting designers, bartenders, security, box office, and other venue staff that were let go in March, many of whom are nearing the end of their unemployment benefits. Agenda Item 11, most specifically, the Recovery Leasing Incentive, offering commercial property tax reimbursements to property owners in exchange for renegotiating leases, will be an integral step in addressing the long-term affordability crisis we are currently facing, as our industry will be on life support for the foreseeable future. Agenda Items 12 and 13, establishing guidelines for the administration of funds designated by the SAVES resolution that was passed in September should be adopted immediately to ensure that these funds are distributed as expeditiously as possible. It has been over two months since council passed the SAVES resolution. While I appreciate and commend council for adopting this resolution, further delays will inevitably result in permanent closures of our iconic local businesses. Please direct staff to distribute emergency funds before the end of the month, especially to the most vulnerable businesses that determine by the metric of being at risk of closure in the next 30 days without additional financial support. Thank you for your time.
Marina Garrett.
Council members, Mayor Adler. My name is Marina Garrett, and I am a sexual assault survivor. Last time I was speaking to you all, each one of you had a yellow bandana tied around your microphone in support of sexual assault survivors. That was also the time that Councilwoman Natasha Harper-Madison shared that my testimony in 2016 was what led her to get to public service. That was also around the time that Councilmember Kuntar stated in an interview that it was testimonies like mine that were helpful to the council. Here I am today to tell you all, as this lawsuit gets close to entering its third year, I'm beginning to feel like that support is falling to the side. The re-traumatization I am feeling by recent actions of your lawyers is hard to ignore. When your lawyers make an embarrassment of a settlement offer, or ask us to mediate and then never respond, or there are disingenuous filings in court, we are hurt over and over again. And you all right here have the power to make it stop. You have the power to let survivors and the city of Austin know that you do support survivors, and that you do want to do, to right the wrongs that happened to all of us at the hands of your police department. I know that might feel like policy change, but it isn't just policy change. It's accountability. And where does that accountability lie, if not in the settlement that we truly deserve? With each of these awful steps your lawyers are taking, it's beginning to feel like the plan is to break us, to break us and to have us drop this lawsuit. But we aren't going anywhere. We've been through too much to let anything get in the way of our fight for justice. And I would just like to say that if this lawsuit was about any other crime being mishandled, I don't think that the settlement would even be in question, and I think that's exactly what got us to this problem. Thank you.
Mayor. Yes. I'd like to thank Ms. Garrett for testifying, although obviously, I know that she would prefer to not have to keep coming back to testify here. I think it's important for the bias in the public to know that we do have executive sessions teed up on Tuesday to talk about this, and I think, as Ms. Senko said during her testimony, that it's important for us as council to keep stepping up and to do our part, I think, in her words. And so we will, while we are posted for that today, I think we all just got an email that we will be discussing it on Tuesday.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. My name is Tyson Swindle. I'm the president of the Red River Cultural District and a small business proprietor three times over in District 9. I'm here to voice favor for items 11 through 13. The time has elapsed, and we had to make a decision on how to disperse this money. And I would also like to add that I, I would also like to add my support of item 48. Thank you for your time and consideration. I won't keep you long. I know that I've heard quite a few of these testimonies, but I want to remind you that the time is now for action and not hopes and promises. Thank you very much.
Jeanette Gregor.
Hi, I'm Jeanette. I'm the co-founder of the Amplified Sound Coalition. Good morning. And thank you for the opportunity to speak about items 11 through 13 as they pertain to the SAVES resolution, and more importantly, the potential impact these resolutions can have on my very fragile event community. I'll be direct here. In one week last March, I lost six festival contracts, one full-time and one part-time job, because my entire 20-plus-year career is dependent on mass gatherings of people who go see live music. We've been pleading with the city for months now to send the events community a live draft, and in September, we were acknowledged, and I felt hopeful for the first time since March. Every draft of this resolution includes language like "immediate," "emergency," and "rapid" when it comes to funding, which I take to mean that something will happen, you know, soon. We're now being told that maybe possibly applications for venues will open in February for maybe possibly April dispersal. I think we can all agree that what has happened thus far is neither immediate nor is it rapid, and it certainly doesn't denote an emergency. Recently, the EDD gave an interview on KXAN in which they said funds would be dispersed as soon as possible with respect to the taxpayers' money. And I think this perfectly illustrates the problem here. Event workers are not seen as part of this community, but we are those taxpayers. If you need any further proof of that disconnect between our industry and city management, I urge you to look at the proposed guidelines in your backup. Section 6 of the Live Music Preservation Fund new guidelines suggests venue owners talk to their landlords about lowering rents and extending leases. Y'all, come on. Do you think there's a venue owner in this city that hasn't had that conversation multiple times? The enigmatic, yet mandatory, technical assistance program has zero definitions and will unnecessarily add time to the award process. Time we don't have. We're tired. We're out of time. Our community wants to focus on how to make our sector better, safer, more diverse, equitable, and fair, but we cannot move forward without knowing our industry will survive here. At the very least, I'm asking council to please remove the mandatory technical assistance program requirements that haven't been thought out and give venues the opportunity to survive by administering funding now, before the new year. Save my job and thousands like it. And last, if the folks tasked with dispersing these funds quickly cannot deliver, take the responsibility away from them and give it to someone who can. I feel like we deserve at least that much respect. Thank you all for your time.
Kristin Troken.
Good morning, Mayor Adler and City Council. My name is Kristin Troken. I am a sexual assault survivor and a plaintiff on the class action lawsuit involving the city. You will have heard from several of us today. I've been vocal about my story and the lawsuit, but I've held my reserves about coming before you, until today. I'm not here to tell you my story or any of our stories. You already know them. We are survivors of rape and sexual assault, but most of you know the depth of the weight that we carry, like being kidnapped and held hostage, stalked and strangled, beaten and tied up by a stranger in your own home. stalked and strangled, beaten and tied up by a stranger in your own home. You already know that we feel re-traumatized by very specific acts and institutions within our justice system. It would be pointless to go over the details to add shock value because you already know how truly horrific the details can be. I am here in search for hope for the future. But in a year like 2020, aren't we all? It's been a crazy year, to say the least. A global pandemic, a nationwide shutdown, mass rioting, and a society of people at war with the truth. I feel selfish to stand here begging for an honest commitment and a hope for the future because I feel like at the end of the day, that's what we're all doing. But here I am. I am in constant search for signs of promise. I was thrilled to see a judge awarded and an Austin sexual assault victim 19.1 million after an assault at a local massage parlor. That is, until I found out that the victim was male. Because at a recent settlement meeting with the city attorneys, our entire class of women was offered a small fraction of that. What kind of message are your lawyers trying to send? How much does the city value its women? $6.4 million is budgeted by the city of Austin annually for the care of 16 horses. Our entire class of women was offered a fraction of that. A single horse alone is budgeted $400,000 a year, and our entire class of women was offered a fraction of that. Is that how you really feel? The city values one single horse more than the women of Austin? That violent crimes against women don't matter, but sixth-street crowd-control horses do? I hope this news shocks you as much as our stories did. We are 12 women who have fought through hell and then chose to go through it again so that others won't have to. We are not activists. We are not lobbyists. We are warriors, and every single one of us has the battle scars to prove it. We all stand for change, and I know that substantial change does not happen without monetary contribution. Accountability must be held. I would like to end on this note. When your city attorneys approach you to discuss your opinion on the settlement, whatever number you collectively land on, be proud of it because it represents a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Scott Richards.
Hello, everyone. Um, and to the young lady that just spoke before, I, uh, I hear you and we feel you. Um, that's a little tough to follow. Uh, I am a regular citizen. Uh, thank you for listening to me today. Uh, I'm an Austin transplant from Charlotte, North Carolina, having moved here to South Austin in 2011. I am here to speak about Items 11, 12, and 13. I came to town with no job, a single friend, whose couch I crashed on. I moved here sight unseen. I just knew there was a vibe in the community that couldn't, I couldn't wait to be a part of. One of the first things that stood out when I finished the 21-hour drive is that I could find live music on any night in just about any restaurant or bar I entered. This is paradise. I'm not a musician by trade, but love an evening listening to artists pour their skills and hearts out on stage. I was already a concert junkie in North Carolina, but this was uncharted territory. What makes things even more special? Some of these venues provide an intimate live music experience. This is peak fandom. When I think of Austin, I first think of artists and musicians. These venues need our help. These venues need your help. The state's resolution was unanimously approved on September 7th. Please allow the funds that were allocated to be released. These venues are dying, and what makes these venues special are the people who run them. Don't let this talent pool move to another city like Nashville, Oklahoma City, Houston. Austin needs to take care of our venues so that our artists can perform their crafts. I couldn't imagine an Austin that didn't help discover musicians like Janis Joplin, Kacey Musgraves, Black Kummas, Leon Bridges, Shaky Grace, Whitney Rose, Midland, Spoon, Shiny Ribs, Gary Clark Jr., and Willie Nelson, Stevie Ray Vaughan, the list goes on. Please, I am a very concerned citizen that we are going to lose the most unique part of Austin to the rest of Texas and America. Let the funds go to those who need it before it's too late. I implore you guys to come and save Austin music. Thank you.
Stephen Sternshine.
Good morning, Council. Steve Sternshine here. I'm the, uh, owner of Empire Controlling Garage in the parish here in town. I'm also the co-founder and the board treasurer of the National Independent Venue Association that's fighting for, uh, relief for music venues all over the country at the federal level. I'm here today to speak in support of Items 13, um, excuse me, 11 through 13. Uh, and I appreciate the, uh, hard work that everybody has done to get us to the point where we have a plan uh, and to encourage and really beg you guys to move this along as fast as possible because, uh, we're not going to be able to survive for much longer, uh, without help. And it's also imperative that the Music Venue Alliance and the Red River Cultural District, which, uh, represent the interest of all of us here in town who are in the, um, independent music community, be involved and engaged in the process intimately, uh, yeah, because they have the most accurate information and, uh, how to get funds where they need to go as quickly as possible. So, uh, I won't take up more of your time. I think you've heard from, uh, you know, all of us, the folks today, how important this is to us. Uh, and we appreciate your support in advance. Thank you.
Zenobia Joseph. Zenobia Joseph. Be sure to unmute, please. Jason Terasina.
Hello, my name is Jason Terasina. I'm speaking to you again on behalf of Amplified Sound Coalition, the newly-founded Texas Music Workforce Coalition. We demand passage of Items 11, 12, and 13 and a concrete timeline for the full distribution of SAVES resolution. For too long, the city and this governing body has taken for granted the music community that lives and works in Austin, the supposed live music capital of the world. For years, the city council has catered to developers, real estate agents, and other moneyed interests more than the community that provides the actual attraction businesses and the people love Austin for. The Austin music community has asked for a preservation fund and the city has responded with a SAVES resolution, which is nice, but the program that is already failing and it hasn't even been more than two months since its inception. We all know what the options are. Every council member and every citizen knows what the next step should be. So why is this not in motion yet? There is no confusion and there is no, no reason for a delay in the actual implementation of the distribution of the funds in the SAVES resolution. Is it contrived apprehension of not wanting to throw bad money after good and conjured-up new guidelines that slow down the process? Nashville, Houston, Oklahoma City, and other places have delivered millions of dollars in aid within just a few weeks. It's embarrassing we can't get our act together for our own music community. Why the delay here in Austin? I beg the question, does this governing body simply not care who owns the venues and where they are located? It seems that like this.
Have we lost the sound?
We believe it's on his end, Mayor. We'll call him back.
Thank you.
Karen Reynolds.
Hello, my name is Karen Reynolds. We have elected our first African-American woman as vice president, which makes Jim Duncan's act of assaulting an African-American woman even more egregious. Allison, would you be okay with Jim smacking Vice President-elect Harris on her butt? I wouldn't think so. So why have you allowed your appointee to remain on the commission? Over a year ago, you remained aware of this assault and you have done nothing. You should be ashamed of yourself, and anything less than removing Jim is hypocritical, appalling, and an insult to women, especially women of color.
Mayor, that concludes all of the speakers.
Mayor, may I address that?
Hang on one second. Councilor Tovo?
Hello.
Muted. Can't hear you, Kathy.
May I address that? Speakers, comment?
Go ahead, Councilmember Alter. Councilor Tovo, you need to figure out a way that you're not muted. And you go. Go ahead, Kathy.
Kathy or Allison?
Allison, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, so colleagues, you may recall that Ms. Reynolds emailed all of our offices with this allegation earlier in the year. My office attempted to speak with this individual to get additional information, and she declined to communicate verbally with us. She's periodically emailed all of the council offices with these various charges, and my office requested the law department investigate the issue. Ms. Reynolds declined more than one request from the law department to participate in the independent investigation, but instead has chosen to come here to speak today. We were told by the law department that the individual that Ms. Reynolds has described as the victim has adamantly disputed the characterization given by Ms. Reynolds and made it clear that the incident did not occur in the manner Ms. Reynolds has described and that they were not a victim of any inappropriate behavior in any way. I would urge Ms. Reynolds, if she continues to believe something inappropriate happened, to please communicate with the independent investigator in the city of Austin's law department, who has attempted on more than one occasion to communicate with her. To protect the identity of the person who Ms. Reynolds has described as a victim, I won't say more here, but I believe the law department can speak to any of my colleagues if they have questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tovo, are you still trying to speak? Can't hear you.
Mayor, um, I'm not sure how I turned it off as I wasn't able to. I, I wanted, I wanted to ask our clerk whether that individual was on the phone not to engage in a conversation, but just because it sounded like a recorded voice and I wasn't clear on whether it was a live discussion or not. But anyway, I appreciate Councilmember Alter, um, Alter's additional information and, um, thank you very much for your, your attentiveness to, to that issue and to working with our law department.
All right, colleagues, those are all the speakers that we have. We're considering the consent.
Mayor.
Yes.
I'm sorry, we have two, two speakers that called in.
Oh, great.
Okay.
Back that speaker.
Um, Jason Terasina.
Yeah, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, um, I guess we just wrap up what I'm saying, but yeah, um, I don't know. It, it just feels like, um, this, you know, council does not really care to help existing venues and communities comprised of survive the, you know, the catastrophic event that's devastating us. Um, you know, is this council okay with new music venues under new ownership and concentrated wealth taking the place of world-renowned music venues that have, without a doubt, made Austin the live music capital of the world? It seems the council takes, or thinks, the people of Austin won't notice and like them, don't care. Um, if so, you couldn't be any more wrong. Where's the moral consistency? Where are the convictions? Where's your sense of urgency? Yet again, we demand the city of Austin distribute the funds in the SAVES resolution this month, not next year, now. There's no, there's one thing you would know if you know those of us in the music community, and that is we are very passionate people. We're passionate about our music and we're passionate about the work we do. We clearly don't do it for the money. Studies estimate that the Austin music community is comprised of about 30,000 Austinites at large. That's more than the police and fire unions combined. We are understanding our power. We are now organizing around it, and we will no longer be dismissed or placated. We are here, we are active, and we're just getting started. Thank you.
Thank you. Colleagues, those are all the speakers that we have. Uh, I get this to the consent agenda. The consent agenda behind this item.
Mayor, we have one more speaker.
Go ahead.
Zenobia Joseph.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Zenobia Joseph. I, Mayor, can you just tell me the numbers that you have listed for me to speak on?
Clerk, can you help with that, please?
One second, we don't have it readily available.
I have her on 39, 41, 44, 45, and Austin Housing Finance, Item 2. Thank you, clerk. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, I'm Zenobia Joseph. My comments are specifically related to Item 44, which I am in support of Representative Henna Host's House Bill 84. I did go back and look at the legislative history, House Bill 2266, back in 2005, predominantly talked about Austin smart housing when the legislation was enacted. I just would call to your attention that specifically the prohibition on the certain municipal requirements, uh, Section 214.905, does not prohibit you from creative solutions at the local level. And so I do have a critique. As it relates specifically to the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act of 2017, I would ask you to include that language in the resolution so that you can be a little bit more proactive in the opportunity zones. What I want you to understand is that that's a deferred capital tax gains, uh, tool that you have in your kit, and you can use that now. What happens at present is that these 4% low-income housing tax credits are creating concentrations of poverty because Councilmember, uh, Poole is a sponsor of this, he's a, this ordinance. I would just ask you, Councilmember Poole, to recognize that if you want a compact and connected city, there needs to be transit on FM 734, east and west. And what has happened is that you have 390 units, 300 units in the Howard Lane area that were approved in 2020 by Travis County Commissioners Court, and the nearest bus stop is three to four miles. I want you to understand that's $4.7 million for the Metro Rapid Line that was eliminated. And I would ask you to find the funds to enact a piece, um, the Metro Rapid Line there. Specifically, the voters approved $12.1 million for Convict Hill Metro Rapid. And I would just call to your attention that only 2.9 people ride that bus an hour. Um, because it's, um, uh, it's water restricted in that area. It's not going to grow ridership. I would also call to your attention, you mentioned the uprooted, uh, study in the resolution, but the authors of the uprooted study did write a report October 23rd, 2019, and they suggested that council did not listen to them as it related to gentrification on rural sites. Uh, there are many other comments that I can make, but I would just be remiss if I didn't mention, um, the speaker registration on Veterans Day, actually disenfranchise military veterans. And I know that I don't have time to speak to everything else, but Mayor, I would just ask you to recognize on Election Day that there needs to be, um, some language that's added for setup on Election Day because, um, Martha Cook-Ward did get a ticket at Fawn UT when we were setting up for the election month. If you have any questions, I'll gladly answer them at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, colleagues.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to let Ms. Joseph know that there's some additional information to help with, um, the details on the routes for the buses and metro that I will, um, snag for her and send to her by email. I'll ask, um, one of my policy aides to get that information to her to help clarify some of the information that she has. Thanks, and thank you, Ms. Joseph, for your comments.
Thank you. Colleagues, let's do the consent agenda here. Let's see if we have pulled items that, uh, we can handle. Let's see if we have pulled items that we can handle. It's 11:20 now, the goal is to take a break about noon for lunch, as we have as close to that as we can. Let's see how much we can get done. Mayor, pro temp.
I just wanted to move the consent agenda.
Okay. Motion to pass the consent agenda, is there a second? Councilmember Harper-Madison, second. Let's go through this now and make sure that we have this. Your first question we have is item number nine, which is associated now with item number 40. The question was to the manager with respect to item number nine, is putting that off for a week as we put the 40 off for, I mean, putting 40 off for a week, if we put nine off for a week? Does that create any issues? We don't.
Let's go to that, and we have Director Spiller to be able to provide some context on specifically number 40, not number nine.
Okay. So I guess there is an issue. So let's pull 40, and let's pull nine, and we'll then discuss those. Item number 11, the Temporary 380 Program. We have an amendment from Councilmember Cassar that relates to worker issues. Does anybody have any objection to adding Councilmember Cassar's amendment to item number 11? Seeing none, item number 11 is now amended and will remain on the consent agenda.
My second question related to item 11, we can wait until you're done with this process if you want, was how would the manager have us decide whether to fund this program this year or not? So we can discuss that now, or pull it, or whatever, but I wanted to hear from the manager how to resolve that issue.
This is how to fund the program set out in item number 11, the 380 program.
Right, because we discussed that briefly at work session, that it actually could be funded, but I don't know whether to give direction on this one, whether he wants to bring that issue back to us at the next meeting, and so I don't.
And this is in part to your question about whether we could do it now and pay for it in the next fiscal year budget.
It is exactly that question.
Okay.
And whether we need to provide any direction as we pass this item to bring something back, to make a determination on that by majority, or what his recommendation might be, or whether we wanted to determine that today. My sense is it's not ready to be determined today, but I don't want to go the whole winter break without deciding that question if a majority might be comfortable taking the risk. So if we should just pull it so that the staff have some time, that's fine. I just didn't know if it could be handled before consent is done.
I guess the other thing to do would be to pass it today as it is, and then ask Legal to speak to us, perhaps in executive session on Tuesday, as to the legal question, and then have the manager speak to us also on Tuesday about possible funding options for this.
But the problem would be if we discuss it Tuesday, if there's any need to post anything to handle that, then it's too late. And I don't want to just let the item, so if the manager needs his direction on the side, it sounds like maybe we have to pull it if there's not an answer yet. Sorry.
Let's pull item number 11, we know what the issues are, we'll come back and discuss that and see whether it's appropriate for us to pass today or whether we need to.
No, I'm comfortable with passing today. The question is, do we need to add direction or amendments or not?
I understand. So we're going to pull item number 11 for now. Item number 33. Add a star next to this one.
Do you have some language that staff have assisted me with in limiting the term, as I suggested I was going to do?
And was staff okay with doing that? The answer to that is yes.
I temporarily lost their language in the four inches of paper on my desk, and so if Mr. Scarborough is on the telephone and is able to, or Ms. Willett is able to just bail me out on that, that would be great.
James's, staff is available, Councilmember.
That would be great. It was limiting it to.
Listen, is it James, do you have the language?
Mayor, Councilmember James Scarborough, Purchasing Office, yes, I do. If you'd like me to proceed, I'm glad to.
Please read the language, yes.
Yes. Amend item 33 to limit the authorization to the initial term of two years and expenditure amount not to exceed $7,250,000 with the ability to return to council to seek additional terms and expenditure amounts if they are needed.
Thank you. Is there any objection to the Tovo amendment being added to this item 33? Hearing none, it is also added to item 33, and 33 will remain on the consent agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Scarborough.
Okay. Item number 40 is being pulled for the discussion with nine. Staff wants to speak to it. That then gets us to item number 40. I just want to, we're passing by 43, and I just want to address that real quickly. As you recall, what item number 43 does is it just extends the current and existing authorization for Dr. Eschott, for the manager, for Dr. Eschott to adopt rules not dissimilar to, and they've been coordinated with the orders of the county judge and mine. As you recall, we passed this about mid-year, a little past that, to have yet an additional basis of authority for the positions that the city was taking in COVID response. This extends the pre, doesn't change it, just extends what we've been living with here for the past several months. Extends it through next year because it has to be done by ordinance in order to be enforceable that way. If the pandemic goes away, we no longer need these orders, then at that point, we would vote to delete or to remove that ordinance. But that's all it does, it doesn't do anything new, it just extends. Next item, does anybody have any questions about that before we go on? We have Legal available if they're needed. Okay, then let's go on.
I do, Mayor, I was having trouble with my video, I didn't realize it was off.
It's okay, go ahead.
So thank you for the clarification I had. Asked you to speak to that a little bit, as I think there's some confusion. Perhaps Legal can also just add a little bit about, you know, why this is necessary, because we have a rules-making process in the city. As I understand it, this is allowing that to happen in a timeframe that we need in order to be able to take action when necessary under pandemic conditions. So if Legal could provide some of that insight, I just think there's a sense, there's a confusion that I think we need to address so that folks understand that this is providing us a tool for if and when we need it to be able to act. And Ms. Morgan, if you can speak briefly to why this kind of step is necessary, I would appreciate it.
Sure, this is an important tool that we came up with with the mayor, as he said earlier on. I know Trish Link is on the line, she's worked really hard on drafting these, and can I address your questions more specifically if you'd like?
Councilmember Alter.
If she could, that would be great.
Patricia Link, with the Justice Department. What this particular ordinance does is it authorizes Dr. Eschott to issue rules, and the rules are geared towards addressing the pandemic conditions. We've had them in place since the summertime, and this ordinance will allow him to continue to adopt those rules as needed as pandemic conditions change. And it is a tool that we can use to address sites that don't comply with the code or if individuals are not wearing face covering.
And absent this, what would be the process if we wanted to try and make those rules? Broadly speaking.
Council still needs to do an ordinance to authorize Dr. Eschott to make the rules. So this is what this ordinance really does, is it says council authorizes him to make rules, and these are the rules that are related to COVID.
But it doesn't say specific rules. It's providing authority to make rules when necessary under pandemic conditions. But it was my understanding that we would also have to have a rule-making process that was much longer by our ordinary ordinances in the absence of this, is that correct?
Correct, so this ordinance simplifies the rules process so that Dr. Eschott can react as necessary.
In a more timely fashion to address pandemic needs when the health authority deems it necessary for public health needs, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, just wanted to clarify that before we voted, thank you.
Thank you. So that's item 43. Let's talk now about item 44, which is the inclusionary zoning item. I start that, does someone bring amendment language to that? Was that yours, Councilman Flanagan?
Yes, that is the amendment language.
Added a whereas clause, as I recall?
Yes, it adds, sorry, my WebEx is acting up. It adds just a whereas clause, it was posted in the message board this morning.
Sounds good, is there any objection to the whereas clause associated with item 44? Hearing none, that will be added, and that will stay on the consent agenda. I'm looking at amendments here. My amendment to item number 10, adding the DAA, was also incorporated, that's part of the consent agenda. That gets us to item number 46. Councilmember Kitchen has proposed some amendments. Is there any objection to the Kitchen amendment, it's item 46? Hearing none, those are incorporated into 46, and that stays on the consent agenda. That gets us to item number 48. Councilmember Cassar had an amendment that was handed out on item number 48. Is there any objection to the Cassar amendment? Hearing none, the Cassar amendment is incorporated into item number 48.
Mayor, if I could speak to that just really for a quick moment, to be really clear about it.
Okay.
It, I appreciate that being accepted in. I know that it should go without saying that new programs like this that we create should be coordinated within our larger strategy, but in part because we recently received a report that even had a slide or a page that showed that some of our current strategy is like a all-too-many tangled lines and that we're trying to align our strategy on addressing homelessness. I thought it'd be important to mention. I want to say here that, of course, it is always more helpful for us to try to provide services to folks on the streets than getting them housed and then continuing those services in housing. So the more that this aligns with our strategy, even with the hotel strategy, where these resources are coming to bear, I appreciate DAA and others bringing resources to bear, the more that that can be connected within our existing strategy, the better. Again, I'm not trying to lay out the details of the program, but it's just something we have received consultant advice on, and so I thought it was worth reiterating here. And I appreciate the other changes that the sponsors have made, and thank you all for bringing this forward.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilor Tovo?
On that front, I did circulate, my office circulated this morning a very minor edit to my resolution, and that should all be in everyone's box.
Okay.
I can also read that change, it is to add, and so my hope is that it can stay on consent, though I have a few words to say about it at the appropriate time. It adds to the be it resolved clause, the first be it resolved clause, language, the following language, including funds for housing subsidies. So we're directing the manager to support the proposed collaboration and to identify any unencumbered funds that could help fund the specialty-intensive integrated management treatment team. We know those funds exist, as the resolution makes clear that the DAC has unused funds from this year, and the AAs, as has been stated, has come forward and agreed to fund the remaining portion.
Okay.
But in addition, we'd like the manager, sorry, we'd like the manager to look for housing funds, but we want the program to begin, you know, as soon as it's ready, even in the absence of those funds for the housing subsidies, not because those are not important, but because we know the resources exist to provide that really critical mental health and physical healthcare. So we want that piece of the program to absolutely be voted.
Any objection to adding the Tovo amendment? Hearing none, the manager?
Just a note that we'll take that direction, but certainly recognize that unencumbered funds are just one time, and typically housing vouchers are ongoing, and so just with that caveat, we'll certainly try to work with the direction that's given with this amendment.
Thank you, manager, and again, I think getting the program moving as quickly as possible is important to address the waitlist that we know exists, and so I want to be sure that we have a really clear communication here today that more time, it sounds as if more time will be needed to identify housing subsidies, and I don't want the work on the core program to be delayed. So I just want to be sure, or do you, is it, knowing that the funds exist to get the team up and running to really address that waitlist, my hope is that you can make that part happen while continuing to look for funding for housing subsidies. Is that your understanding of the intent?
It is, and a little bit of it is just managing expectations on what additional unencumbered funds could be used for that purpose, and so we'll make sure to provide that information to you.
That sounds great, but again, I just don't want to delay. Have a great proposal, I'll just make my comments now since I'm talking about it anyway. I really appreciate Integral Care and Downtown Austin Alliance working, and the Downtown Austin Community Corps for working to create this proposal, but also to identify some of the funding that they had not been able to use for services because some of the programs that provide services to DAC clients had been, had to go with lower capacities through the pandemic. And so leveraging that funding to create this opportunity for individuals who are on the waitlist, who total more than 200, is just really extremely valuable. So thanks again to our partners for coming forward and identifying the need and coming up with a creative solution to meet that need, and then in the case of, and then helping fund that need, and to our staff for their support of this.
And, Councilor Tovo, thanks for bringing this and adding to it the push for housing. I mean, obviously, that's one of the key issues that we have to help people get off the streets and into homes. Manager, if you look at, you know, that group that was $30 million, whatever that money was of the 65 that wasn't spent last year, and you're taking a look to make sure that that money is being moved to kind of the highest priority things, and make sure that whatever that money's being spent for is a higher priority than housing people right now as part of your review. That might be a place where you can find some funding for this as well. All right, that amendment is incorporated without objection. So I'm showing now that the items that we've pulled are nine, 11, and 40, and the rest of the consent agenda, items 1 through 49, are on consent. Been moved and seconded into discussion. Councilmember Cassar, then Councilmember Harper-Madison.
I have one question to just confirm with the Police Department on item number, sorry, now I'm pulling it up again, 24. I don't know if Chief Gay is available. If not, I can wait and have other staff speak their turn. Mayor, why don't you go to others in case Chief Gay's even?
Let Chief Gay know we need him to come, thank you. Councilmember Harper-Madison.
Can you hear me, Natasha? You can't unmute, you can hear me, but you.
All right.
Back to me.
I can hear you now.
Oh, there it is. Okay, I just, I need to pull item number 72 from the consent agenda, but. Okay, I just, I need to pull item number 72 from the consent agenda, but should I hold off until we get to the zoning items?
You can consent, and 72 won't be on, isn't on this morning's consent. This morning's consent.
149. Thank you.
Yep. Councilmember Flanagan.
Thank you, Mayor. Glad to put 46 back on consent. I'm really excited about the use of historic funds for iconic venues, the 15% hotel tax. It is kind of possibly the perfect use of those dollars as these venues, as we're establishing and as we all know, are so closely tied to what makes our tourism industry in Austin so unique in the market. And these are the venues that help fill the hotel rooms with tourists who then pay the hotel tax. And we know as the more tourists we have, the more funds we have for this fund and for the 15% for cultural arts and the newly created by Music Fund as a result of the coming convention center expansion. I do have some concerns with some of the language, but I'm comfortable with the way it's laid out, just as more for staff and for the record around the visitor information centers. But I think this strikes the right balance about letting us move forward on the 15% dollars while we work out those details. So thank you, Councilmember Kitchen and the cosponsors for working that out. I am particularly interested in the staff analysis on the rest of the 15% historic fund. You know, for example, are there projects in the queue that are not, haven't actually begun yet where the underlying site is not at risk of loss the same way news of venues are at risk of loss? Maybe we should be considering some reprioritization of that project list since a lot of that was set before the pandemic began, and I'm very interested in that work continuing with future funds from the 15% historic bucket. It really does strike the absolute perfect balance, I think, between trying to achieve the objectives of state law and the lawful uses of the money. And the other piece, I'm glad to see equity cited in the last be it resolved. It's not in the selection criteria, but I think taken as a whole, it should be clear to the economic development corporation what our expectation is in that regard. I'm not 100% sure about the listed Exhibit A because I'm not sure that it gets us where we want to go. So again, it says consider but not limited to, so I can live with that as well. We want to prioritize equity. There doesn't, in the list, I'm not sure that there's a lot of LGBT or Asian businesses in that mix. Certainly, you could go on and on about all the different types of equity we want to ensure we're achieving. But, but there are lots of iconic businesses, I think, that contribute to tourism, some of which may not be seen by Visit Austin or in large part because those communities for many years had to be hidden. Certainly, LGBT community couldn't be as popular. And then in the long term sense, short term, yes, let's get this thing going, decided to see that happen. In the long term, I am interested in including the Mecca Chambers, our multi-ethnic Chamber Alliance, as possible partners to this work and the EDC to be a strong voice of equity as it relates to our business group. But glad to see this thing moving forward. It's really exciting work.
Councilmember Kitchen?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Flanagan. I absolutely agree with the way that you've characterized it. This gets started with unallocated dollars that our staff said was available from previous 15% historical, and it gives us the opportunity to continue to have that conversation going forward. And the list, as you say, is illustrative at this point, and so it will be important to reach out and provide an opportunity to consider, you know, others that should be on that list. So thank you for saying that. That's exactly the intent, is to get this started. I think it is very exciting.
Councilmember Alter.
So I want to thank Councilmember Kitchen and Tovo and Poole, who I joined with in cosponsoring item 46. We've been working for a long time to figure out whether we could, whether and how we could access some of the hot funding to provide some relief to our iconic venues. And I want to thank Councilmember Kitchen for when I, when I said, let's look at the, you know, the historic preservation bucket and see if we can get some of those old funds for really following up on how to make that happen in practice, which I really appreciate. The second thing that I wanted to comment on, on the consent, is I wanted to note that we have four park acquisition, Parkland acquisition items that I'm really excited about. None of them are in my district, but these are all properties that we are securing with Parkland dedication and with bond funding. And I want to thank our park staff, which is doing a tremendous job of trying to address one of our strategic objectives, to provide access to parks and trails to folks all around the city and securing these properties and eventually developing them is key to that. So I want to thank them for their, their work in being creative and finding these properties and look forward to all of the exciting things that we're going to be able to do with our Parkland dedication and the bond funds that the voters authorized in 2018 for land acquisitions. Thank you.
Okay. And it is, okay, now continuing on with the discussion. Councilmember Kassar, you wanted to ask some questions of Chief Gay?
Yes, just one quick question, just because some folks had, had seen this item and had raised concerns about whether our intellectual property enforcement grants were used in any way against, for example, you know, artists and musicians. It's been an issue potentially in other places. But upon asking some questions and we got a memo, Chief Gay, will you just confirm that my understanding is that the police department has no record, since we've started receiving this grant in 2011, of artists or musicians, trademark or copyright issues being enforced in a way that arrests those, those folks? Like y'all have no record of people being arrested for those things under this grant? And that's the information that I got from y'all, but just wanted that confirmation.
Thank you, Councilmember. This is Chief Troy Gabe with the Austin Police Department, Chief of Staff. You are absolutely correct in your assessment, and we are focusing our efforts strictly in regards to the memo that we sent to you guys.
Thank you. Well, I feel comfortable moving the item and with the continued direction that you stay on those priorities laid out in the memo, which were things like fraud that was targeting our elderly and kids and financial crimes and that sort of thing. So thank you for clarifying that for my office and the community that asked that question. Thanks.
No problem.
Okay, good. We're on the consent agenda, which is items 1 through 49. Items being pulled right now are nine, 11, and 40. Any further discussion? Councilmember Tovo?
Mayor, is there a chance that we could just put nine back on? I know Councilmember Alter wanted to talk about 40 and whether it needed a postponement, but can we keep nine on for the postponement and?
I think her question, I think, I think my collection was Allison's question was whether, because she had questions about number 40 that seemed to be related to item number nine, she wasn't sure whether or not nine should pass until the questions respect 40 have been resolved.
Um, no, I wanted to, I mean, I wanted 40 not to pass without some more time, but I think nine needs to be postponed regardless of what happens on 40.
Does anybody have any objection to number nine, spend 15% agenda with a postponement until next week? Hearing none, nine will be postponed till next week and remain part of the consent agenda. That just leaves us then 11 and 40 being pulled. Any further discussion? And as they go both, those who favor the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Those opposed? All right.
Mayor?
Yes?
Can I make just a couple of quick comments? One, I wanted to request of our manager, I know, I don't believe that we'll have time for this conversation at our next, at our next work session, but early in January, I'd like to request a council conversation, a piece of which would have to be an executive session, related to some of the memos we received about the historic funding related to the hotel occupancy tax. I believe that we would benefit from really a better understanding as a council, the calculations and the way in which they seem to diverge from the last group of calculations that we received from Carla Stephens when we were talking about historical funding for the historic preservation piece of the hotel occupancy. I believe there is more, more there than the staff memo suggested and Carla Stephens' memo had indicated there was. So I know that's like way in the weeds for today. My request really is just, could we get it on our work session for early January because it's significant and I, and I don't want too much time to pass and have staff believe that we have, we have sanctioned that particular assumption. It also relates to a conversation that we had in executive session and some guidance we provided to staff about that historic, about the funding that remained within historic preservation and a potential future use that we can't talk about in open session. And two, I think before much more time passes, we need to get, we need to get a really clear understanding between staff and the council about, about one, how much funding exists and two, what one contemplated uses of it. So, manager, if you could add that in for, for January, that would be great.
Will do, Councilmember. Thank you.
I also just, and I also just wanted to say thank you, colleagues, for postponing number nine. That additional time is really important, I think, for our council, but also for our community. And manager, I wanted, I know that you and I had an opportunity to talk about Health South and some of the ways in which we've engaged the community to respond and to help us and guide us in our use of publicly owned land, seahome tract, the green development, the seahome intake building, these all included a public component that was really important to, to helping make sure that we had the community's trust and the community's investment and support of how we were going to use publicly owned, city-owned tracts as they were redeveloped. And I want to be sure that we don't skip that step with Health South. And so depending on whether the postponement, whether, depending on whether or not we vote next week or vote in early January, I'd like to add in, and will be providing some direction to our, to our manager that I hope our council will support about, including that public component and feedback session. I'd like to ask our manager to create a project page about this on our website so that, so that that feedback can also come in through our website as well. And colleagues, within either today or tomorrow, my staff and I are working to compile some of the questions that we have about the proposal, that the proposals we've received and also to, in part to guide our thinking about how we could get to more affordable housing on this tract. I think we have a really exciting opportunity here. I was, I'm really glad as, as, you know, somebody who has been, who helped initiate, you know, co-led the initiation of this, or co-sponsored the initiation of this process to look at Health South for the use of affordable housing. I'm excited to be at this art point, but I look forward to our conversations and to working with all of you and with the community to see how we can achieve even more affordable housing and community benefits on this tract. So if you would, just please keep an eye out for the, for the message board post and some of the questions. My staff, Ashley Richardson and my staff has done a great job of compiling a lot of the reports that are not part of our backup for today's agenda, and so we'll provide links to those on the message board as well so that that can help, can help guide our conversation and the community's conversation.
Great, thank you. Are we ready to take a vote on the consent agenda? Those who favor?
Sorry to have confused it. I think we did.
I think we already did, Mayor.
I just had my, my comments were ill timed. I'm sorry to throw things off.
I think I called for the vote. I don't know what we actually did at the.
Yes, we did, Mayor. We did.
Okay. Then the consent agenda passed.
I don't remember raising my hand.
Those who favor the consent agenda, please raise your hand. Those opposed? Everybody raised their hand, it passes. You may have done that twice, but it'll count anyhow. All right, we have two items. Item 380, I don't know if, just to think about that over lunch and then come back with how they propose that we move forward with that. That way you have time over lunch to think about it. Item number 40, did you want to talk about that in an executive session? Allison, before we talked about it on the desk?
I'm okay to hear what Director Spiller has to say, and I just want to be clear that my concern is, as, so the ILA that led to this, I didn't want to approve at the time because I wanted more time to review it precisely because of the situation that I feel like we're in right now. As I understand it, these, this 3 million cost will have to be absorbed by Health South, which will mean that they can provide fewer community benefits for the affordable housing that we are contemplating. And so that is what I'm trying to understand. If we approve this, then we're basically saying Health South has to do that or we absorb it. And I'm not comfortable with that without some more clarity, and I don't know that I'm going to get that clarity today. But I'm happy to hear what Mr. Spiller has to say, and then we can take it up again after lunch if it doesn't resolve the issue. If he's fine with the postponement for the week, then we can move forward.
Mr. Spiller addressed that issue substantively and also postponed for a week.
Yes, can you hear me, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
To be clear, Health South will not, will not have to pay for those waived fees. Those are separate. The roadway is being constructed by Central Health and the fee waiver are fees that we would not collect on that construction. And so Health South and the affordable housing project will not be saddled with any of those fees. We obviously need the right of way that goes through that property that was already presented and conceived as part of the development so that we can straighten the street out. But all development costs will be handled through the ILA with Central Health. In terms of postponing, the developer, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Alter, does that answer the question?
Um, yeah, I want to, I would like to think about it. I may have some more questions after lunch, but I appreciate that clarification. But I still would like to know what the consequences are of a postponement for a week.
In terms of the consequences, we have a contractor ready to start the construction. The provider of that street, which is actually the UT Development, has already paid all of the permits and the design, and they are really ready to get started. And every bit of delay delays them in moving forward and being confident on the construction of their building. So there would be an impact.
Okay, so maybe if I can just get back to you after lunch and see if I have further questions. Still remain uncomfortable with the ILA that we signed, but let me see if I have further questions after lunch and we can address it then, if that's okay.
Sounds good. Councilmember Tovo?
Yeah, thank you. You know, through this last week, when, once the agenda posted, I was reflecting back on that conversation about the ILA, Councilmember Alter, and remembering that you had urged us to make sure that we had at least the documents in front of us to approve. And, you know, in the end, we did not, we, we made a decision on that without reviewing the documents. The consequence for Health South appears to have been that in the course of doing what switched from an RFI to an RFP, as I understand it, the Transportation Department, because of the ILA, then added in the requirement that the Health South development, so it is a city-owned tract and a project designed to fulfill our interest in having community benefits, then became responsible for that more than $3 million cost of the Red River alignment. That was communicated to those who were doing proposals, and who knows how that impacted the proposals that we received because it became a revenue requirement that was added onto the, onto the projects. You know, all of this happened long after any council conversations we had about Health South. I mean, it just happened in the course of the switch from the RFI to the RFP, which came about, you know, though we as a council talked about doing an RFI and had confirmation from our housing staff that that was the case. CBREALIS, I think it was said on Tuesday that it was the language in our resolution that prompted that change. That wasn't accurate. It was CBREALIS came on board to assist the city and recommended, you know, again, long after our council conversation, recommended to our city staff, they switched to an RFP, which they did. And then the transportation, once the ILA passed, again, in the interim, the Transportation Department communicated to our economic development staff that that would have to be a cost associated with the Health South project. That went into the RFP. Those who did proposals had to accommodate that cost. So, I mean, I think the good news is that as I understand it, and I believe Director Spiller, you just confirmed that you have now changed that decision.
Yes, Councilmember.
I mean, that's a change that has just happened. You know, I had a meeting with staff on Monday, and then on Tuesday, it was announced that Health South would no longer have to bear that cost. But that is, I just want to be really clear because Councilmember Alter, I think, missed that piece of the meeting. That is, that's a, and. brand, and for some reason, the audio was not great at our work session. And so I got some questions about that, too, about whether that was what Director Bruseno was saying. So I appreciate you confirming that, that that is the case, that Health South is no longer responsible for that cost, but that is a brand new decision.
Councilmember, at the time of discussions with regards to the RFI, RFP, we did not have a solution on the ILA with a different partner, and they were parallel processes. And yes, we were able to resolve that such that we no longer had to have that contingency. So Health South will not be responsible for construction of the roadway.
Oh, thank you. I, I think that's entirely appropriate. And I don't know how, how often we'll find ourselves in this circumstance. I hope as we go forward, you know, we're going to be able to, to have these conversations again about city-owned tracts that are being redevelopment for public purposes. I hope that we're not then going to saddle them up with, with financial requirements just because we do have private developments. You know, this is intended to be really a, a city project. So, but anyway, I appreciate that decision. I do think, just for my colleagues, one of the questions, you know, I think that this opens up more opportunity to have more affordable housing units on, on that tract because with that $3 million removed, we should be able to achieve more, more affordable housing units. So that's one of the questions I have to staff is how that removal would impact not just the one that's been recommended, not just the proposal that's been recommended, but how it might have impacted the other two, some of the other proposals that were not the top one recommended by staff. And manager, I would like to request also that the applicants, if they're interested in doing so, that the applicants for the Health South project be present next Thursday so that, or whenever we take this up for, for next level of approval, so that we have an opportunity to ask of them that very question. It may be hard for our staff to, to respond, but the applicants themselves may be able to do so.
Councilmember Alter, and then Councilwoman Poole.
Thank you, Councilmember Tovo. I did miss that on Tuesday when Councilmember Kitchen and I were working on the Austin Transit Partnership interview process, which overlapped with the extension of work session. So I just want to be clear. So Health South will not be on the hook. Whoever develops Health South or the city will be on the hook for the realignment. So that's one. Two, we are waiving the right-of-way fees. So we are, if, if this was otherwise done, we would have those fees. Are the costs for permitting, et cetera, still being covered? And then is UT covering all of the costs of the movement or, or Central Health, whichever one of moving the Red River there?
Councilmember, this is Rob Spiller. Again, let me answer your first and, and third question first. All costs of construction are being borne by Central Health for the construction of Red River Street. We will come to you with a proposal to transfer right-of-way to them to compensate for the city's expense. That's where ATD gets involved, and that is part of the public plaza design process that is, is ongoing. And so, again, just to be clear, Health South will not have any cost of construction. We do, of course, I will just say again, need the right-of-way from Health South to be able to build the road in that location, and that's been accommodated in the design concepts. In terms of cost of service, yes. Central Health and therefore UT, the developer of the roadway, will pay the, the cost of service. What we are waiving are the right-of-way rental fees that are usually used when a developer's building in the right-of-way. The reason we believe that's appropriate here is they are building a new street on behalf of the city here, correcting a grid problem. Most of the work that...